Republic which stands one nation under God invisible of liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
Morning.
Called meeting to order. Uh, we do have a quorum. I'll take a motion to approve the agenda in a minute.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All favor I?
I.
I oppose. Motion carry. Uh, Rich Brown, good morning.
Morning, how are you guys?
Good.
Not much discussed. I think most of our paving projects are complete uh for the year. Um, the three hundred and forty second street bridge um they ran into some uh about a month ago, maybe I got. I don't remember if I told you guys they had some bolt alignment problems on the railing and they're getting that solved now. So they're getting some of the some of the bolt brackets reamed out so they will align better with the bolts that were cast in the sides of the beams. Um, so when you get them done, they'll be putting that railing back on that kind of slowed them down. So but that project's gonna start moving ahead here shortly again. So um, I guess the next few weeks we'll have that project wrapped up. So our construction should be done for the season. Um, we're still out trying to do some patching yet. Um, we got most of what we wanted to hit on one oh five. Uh, some of the big stuff at least one oh five east. Um, I know the guys are looking down south of uh the BMC quarry. South of four hundred and thirty seconds around four hundred and thirty seconds, what they would call for in three hundred and forty seconds, sorry. Um, the south side of the quarry, there's some some rough spots that they're looking at. We're looking at trying to patch yet too. And then we'll see if we can get some of our uh some of the overlay stuff uh patched where we can where we've got some bad stuff. So um, other than that, too, I think this week I'll uh be making some phone calls for some new hires. I'll present to you guys next week on my recommendations for hiring. Um, and then probably this week, too, I'll send you guys or I'll uh turn in my annual report for twenty twenty uh and give you a summary. Um, basically, we had a carryover balance of uh, I think I've talked to you guys a little bit about it last week, but we had a carryover.
Oops.
Immuded himself.
He muted himself.
You muted yourself.
You muted yourself.
I was using the space bar, so now it's to be at. So last year, last year, we had an incoming carryover balance of two point four million roughly. Uh, this year, our outgoing carryover balance is two point one, so we spent that down. But also that looks that looks high, but the motor grader we ordered um didn't come in before the end of the fiscal year. So there's about three hundred thousand, three hundred twenty thousand dollars that should have come out of last year's budget, dropping that down, along with payment for the three hundred and forty second street bridge, which we had put into last year's budget. Um, we didn't rock the northeast corner of the county because the wind tower people are there and they put a lot of money into it. So that saved us about a hundred thousand dollars, maybe. Um, and then the the paving projects we just just got done with were also kind of slated for last year. So if you took all those numbers and backed them down, we'd be looking at maybe a seven hundred thousand dollar carryover versus two point one. Just a matter of how the the numbers come in and when the money gets spent. So all in all, we're gonna have to amend the budget for fiscal twenty one to take care of these um expenses anyway. So it kind of it's kind of a rolling accounting method to to know where we're exactly where at. So um, but just kind of so you guys know where we're at money wise, um, we had uh, I think we did okay. We spent a lot of our over our carryover down um with projects and things like that. So um, basically, that's the summary. We had uh our maintenance side went over probably. It didn't go over ten percent, so we're good there. The 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 maintenance side of things was a little high. We were about a nine percent overrun on on maintenance as far as what we did out um on the roads, which you know means we got a lot more done than we planned um dollar wise. So um, all the other categories were a little bit less. Um, engineering was underspent by about four percent, four and a half percent. Um, we overran on the maintenance by nine point six percent. And then general, general uh, general maintenance stuff was under under budget by about twenty four percent. So um, that's the fuels and the the mechanic stuff. That's usually how that gets thrown in there is the the tools, supplies, parts, things like that. So we were good on it. We underran on that from what we had planned on. But like I said, the biggest deal was the construction. We didn't well, and and that that twenty four percent would also include the the equipment that we didn't didn't pay money for. So if we had that in there, we'd be running less than twenty four percent. Other than that, we got all all the motor graders are out running blade or running gravel since we got some moisture this weekend. Um, and so we've got those running and we're looking at some patching. Got any questions? Confused?
What's up, man?
Your microphone, your microphone just went crazy. A lot of static. Yeah, you're okay now. You're okay now.
Okay. Well, blame Joel. I've got everything cleared out.
I think so.
It's always you, Rich.
Yeah, I figures.
Uh, Rich, thanks for getting that done on Fifth Avenue for Gaskell. Looks very nice.
Internet, anything else, Rich?
No.
Okay, I think we're good to go.
Questions?
All right, thanks.
Thanks.
We're all happy with this.
Yeah, he sent me a message right away and said, thanks for getting that done. And they did it. But I mean, it's.
Yeah, I know.
It looks good.
Hopefully works.
Just look at it Saturday.
Okay.
Uh, next on the agenda, discussion for jury selection, location for upcoming trials. Jeff?
Thank you. I I think is you're all aware, we have eleven trial dates in any given year. We have not been able to do any, and and again, I'm talking district court jury trials. We haven't been able to do any since March. And they've been backing up and and we now have a number of them that are scheduled to go and will likely go. The judicial branch, our Supreme Court has put a number of restrictions in place. We've already done some trials to the court where we've learned the hard way that trials take three times as long in the era of COVID. And we have masks and we have face shields and we do clean up after everyone. And we still maintain a six foot distance with all of the participants in the room. We're gonna have to continue doing that when we have a jury come in. Normally, it would take two hours to pick a jury and we bring in approximately fifty people into the courtroom. Call call them up at about twenty at a time and everyone can hear the questioning and what's going on. Uh, with COVID, we only have the ability to do maybe fifteen people in the courtroom at a time. And if we have to do that, we're looking at three sessions as opposed to just one session. So the judges have asked the individual counties if there's a larger area available so that we can do jury selection. We are currently talking to the Methodist Church. They sound agreeable. Uh, but we haven't, they haven't had a meeting since we actually formally asked them. Um, but I'm expecting that they will be agreeable to it. And that will allow us a a room where we should be able to get fifty people plus all of the participants. And we can just do the jury selection. And then once the jury is picked, we'll bring them back over to the courthouse and continue with the trial here. Towards that end, it's gonna require tearing down what's normally in Wesley Hall, which is tables and chairs. And then we're rearranging those chairs so that they have the seven foot spacing for everyone. And then once it's done, it's gonna be a matter of wiping them down with the antiseptic so that they are clean. Um, I initially had talked to the Worth County janitor as to whether or not he's willing to do it. He's really not excited about it. And I understand that. And he's got enough on his plate already. Uh, initially, I didn't want to put it on the church. Um, I did talk to the church after we had our email last week to see if if our custodian, who's Karen Hove, would be willing to do it and be reimbursed for her time from the county. Uh, the pastor talked to her over the weekend and she is willing to do that. I don't have a a dollar amount. I'm assuming it would be in the neighborhood of twenty dollars an hour. We're talking about uh happening once at the end of September, once in at the end of October, once in December, as far as for the rest of this calendar year. Again, there's eleven dates throughout the year, so it's it's we aren't looking at more than one one a month. Um, I don't know if the court is gonna want to try and do this when and if they do civil trials. Um, we're still talking about Worth County citizens that are are coming in. They're the ones that are gonna get the savings of time and not have to sit for an overly long period of time and have less of a risk of being exposed to to COVID. I am not talking about the civil trials at this point, but just be aware uh, they they may be making that that request. Uh, so it may actually be more than the potential of eleven times. It would seem to me that that we're talking less than two hundred dollars a time. Um, I know Jackie said there's some money and some budget, not a great deal. Um, and I usually have money left over in my budget, although I'm not, I don't know that anyone's excited about paying for this, but that's.
I'm guessing we can get grant funds for it. That it would be something over and above that should qualify for the CARES Act. Then I'm gonna have to figure out, yeah.
We would have to pay for it upfront, but get reimbursed later from the CARES Act.
Okay. Cause that's that runs right at the end of the year, doesn't it?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
At this point.
So, yeah, so far, yeah. But no, it's, I think it's, that's what we gotta do. That's what we gotta do. If the church is willing to, let's get some sort of agreement just to rent the rent the space.
We are, we're, well, we're not talking about renting the space. We're, the church isn't interested in making any money off of this. It just, there's, they're looking at helping the community.
Okay.
Uh, we're, we just, we just don't want to lose money.
Janitorial service.
Yeah.
Right.
So that's that, um, so it's.
That's totally understandable.
Yeah, I mean, whatever, whatever they gotta have them, yeah, clean it and rearrange it, do whatever.
So.
If she's got the time for that.
Yeah.
I, again, it's, I'm expecting it to be, you know, one day a month for the next three, three or four months. Um, so.
So do we try to make a motion on this? Do we accept the offer from Methodist Church to pay for the janitorial service, which could be up to two hundred dollars per time?
I I just leave it out. I just leave it on as a.
It's Jeff's jurisdiction.
Jeff's jurisdiction.
That's fine. Yeah, we'll leave it on as yours.
Okay.
See you figure that out and then we'll just.
Deal with it as it comes.
Deals with it as it comes, pay for the janitorial services.
Another COVID thing that we gotta deal with.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
That work?
Yeah, I I think that'll be fine. I just.
Okay.
I I I think for the amount of money we're talking about, I I think we're fine. And just, I just don't want you to be surprised when the bill comes through.
Oh, that's chaos here, don't it?
Yeah, if the church is willing, that would be awesome.
Yeah, it'd be awesome.
Yeah, no, it's just.
So they'll notify, I mean, potential jurors when that comes around, that that's where we'll be meeting and stuff, do you know?
I don't know. I, this, this is all so so new.
Catch it.
I don't know that. I'm I'm assuming that normally you have jurors have to call in to the uh district court number.
Or internet.
Um, and there should be a message on there saying where to, where to report, what to do.
What time to report in.
Just trying to make it easier for here, people come over here asking questions, where do I go type of thing. So I'm hoping that's what they'll do.
Yeah, yeah. Joel will be hearing more of this, cause we need to be able to put wifi in in the church. And the judge had mentioned a PA system. I don't know if we have anything like that.
So as far as wifi goes, we'll probably have to use hotspots.
Nope, that's fine.
And for PA system, Public Health does have a PA system that they purchased with bioterrorism funds years ago. Uh, it's been a while since I've had it unpacked and out, but uh I think it's a, yeah, I think it should function.
And depending on the trial, we've got a couple of higher profile trials that at some point may go. The judge is wondering about setting up a a camera and doing a live stream to the magistrate's courtroom or something. So that if we actually have people that want to be spectators, we can, we can accommodate them, but they're not gonna be able to be in the same room.
We could, we could do a Zoom, I would imagine.
Yeah, well, I it just, I I don't want you to be overly surprised. I'll try and give you give you a certain amount of notice.
Get a screen, put it on the yard.
Yeah.
Everybody bring their lawn chairs.
Projector?
Yeah.
If you do have PA system problems, I actually own one too.
I'm pretty sure at the the one over Public Health is a pretty nice system, so yeah, we should actually utilize that a little bit. I'll get it unpacked here, but yeah, much heads up as possible.
Yep. Well, the first one scheduled for September thirty first and.
Oh, I'm on vacation. Always surprised.
Yeah, I was on vacation.
Anything else?
I I don't know of, nothing else on on that issue. I assume there's any any questions that you might have. We uh, we had what I hope will be the final Cavers hearing on the dogs. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, we're waiting for a decision on that. Uh, my guess is that after he loses, he's gonna appeal it to the Supreme Court again. He's at this point, I think, has lost five different times, but we we keep doing it. Um, you're gonna be seeing a bill for mileage from Kelsey. She came over and and covered it as part of her and my agreement with uh, me covering some of her things before the end of the year. And and she has had her baby. It's healthy and I think she's now back at work.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Joel. Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
Drainage. The drainage claim?
Not today.
So how about DD thirteen lap three and DD forty six lap nine? Engineers to submit plans for project bid letting and letting date.
I have the bid or the plans in electronic form. They're gonna be coming paper form today too. And I have sent the notice to the paper. Um, the date is September fourteenth is the date that we're gonna set the hearing for.
The hearing or the the letting?
Or the, yeah.
Bid letting.
Bid letting date, yeah. The hearing for the bid letting.
Okay.
And let's see, I looked at notices. Pretty sure it was September fourteenth, like at nine thirty and nine forty five.
Nine thirty what?
Nine forty five. So I have.
Yeah.
Work that in with the regular meetings.
Thirteen is at nine thirty and forty five will be nine forty, or forty six will be nine forty five.
When's the deadline to have them into the auditor?
The bids? Be the.
I mean, they're supposed to be coming in. The bids are supposed to be stamped whenever you see.
Must be filed before nine thirty AM on Monday morning, September fourteenth.
So you do.
They have, yeah, that's right. That's right. I just wanna make sure it's stipulated in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause remember when last time I sent you out in the hall about nine thirty two?
He showed up with his bid in hand, yeah.
Yep.
So they need to be received and stamped before nine thirty.
Yep.
Well, and if they don't read that.
Well, I understand. I understand.
Then that's their loss.
Yeah.
No, I know, but I mean, make sure it's clear.
Your part, that's all I understand.
It's in the notice. It's in the first sentence.
It's in the notice. That's all it counts.
That's the law.
That's the law.
And that's this one over here.
Uh, forty six would be.
That one's up there.
Trees.
And the yellow one's up there.
Forty six would be silver.
Oh.
All the trees, they're basically trees and.
Yeah.
Reworking the ditches to get them back to original.
Yeah, I think that's a big one.
Well, that's the big one.
That's the big one.
Bigger, I guess.
All right.
So.
Okay.
I have a motion to submit the plans and set the bid letting date.
So move.
I'll second.
There's a motion of second to submit plans for bid letting date for DD thirteen lap three and DD forty six lap nine for September fourteenth. Any other discussion? Roll call Abrams, I guess maybe.
All right.
Stone, I. Motion will pass. Okay. Next, we need to engage an engineering firm prepared, prepare an engineer's report on private facility proposed to be taken over by the county as petition by Mark Lovett.
So we can just use Boltman make. We don't have to worry about any, I mean.
Yeah.
I think that'd be the best.
I um, threw this by John and he said that there would need to be an engineer's report defining what is being taken over, what lands benefit and the grades and conditions of the facility. It looks like this is an open ditch, which making would make determining grade pretty easy. The easement for the ditch is defined and the assessment schedule is also included. We would simply be creating a record which conforms to the rest of the district, so the future repairs can be made.
So my only other concern would be that that district down there being this is part of it. Kind of any district already. I wonder if that whole district is gonna need to be reclassified and this will be considered a lateral, you know?
We'll have to.
Going forward.
Yeah.
I'm guessing that's how it's gonna turn out. It should turn out, to be honest. That's probably a pretty old district, you know?
Yeah, this is gonna, it's gonna, if it does come, it's gonna have to be considered lateral. The same group is gonna pay that portion, but then.
Right. But I know they're ready to move ahead on some projects down there that need to, there's three foot of silt in some of that ditch. And I feel like mine or Mark would like to see it cleaned anyway.
Sure. I'll check with John on that.
Yeah, so I will make a motion to engage Boltman make for engineering report.
Second. Okay, motion of second to uh at Boltman make, start engineering report on the private ditch, the private district. Any discussion? Take a roll call vote. Abrams, I guess maybe.
All right.
Stone, I. Motion will pass. Claims. Any questions on the claims?
There's a lot of them again.
Yeah. Just keep rolling in.
Yeah, spend money like we have it.
All right, take the motion to approve the claims.
Second.
Motion of second, any other discussion? All favor I?
All right.
I oppose. Motion will carry. Any reports?
No.
Payroll ability, salary changes?
Yes.
Munch of longevity. I have some.
I will make a motion to approve the uh salary changes.
Second. Motion of second to approve salary changes for some individuals in the sheriff's office. Any other discussion? Hearing now, all favor I?
All right.
I oppose. Motion will carry.
Mr. Jim Hansen, that's the Tenold Farm.
Okay. In the party. So I will make a motion to approve fireworks.
Motion to approve fireworks current in it for Jim Hansen, is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor I?
All right.
I oppose.
Also on all the other stuff, which is. Didn't do my homework this morning.
Close enough.
Manure management plan?
From Johnson South.
Yeah.
There's just no changes. I'll make a motion to, yeah, just uh trap rotation. So I'll make a motion to acknowledge the uh manure management plan for, it's Johnson South.
Second. All right, there's a motion of second to acknowledge the manure management plan. Any other discussion? All favor I?
All right.
I oppose. Motion will carry.
That facility actually sits in one of their grounds.
They applied and.
Was, right?
Yeah. Uh, Dan Fink, you have questions concerning reimbursement for medications?
Yeah, kind of what I briefly discussed with some of you before. Um, our new mental health district or the association we joined with, I was in contact with Melissa the last week. She sent out emails that they will not be paying for any medications in the jail, which our other one did pay for them. Um, in the email, she talked to the old CEO who she's only been there for a few months. He said that those were, that was talked about in the conversation with the the our representatives, the board, and they were supposed to talk to the sheriff about amending their budget. Well, we called Sandy Morales and Bill Genzwell from Winnebago County was in there at that time. None of us have heard anything about this. So there is a board meeting tomorrow. This is gonna be discussed at that board meeting. And hopefully something will get done with us getting reimbursements on that. Otherwise, that's about a anywhere from a five to ten thousand dollar hit. We're gonna take a year that was never budgeted for, that we've never had to budget. So I don't know where we're going with it, but right now it's not a good thing, but we'll see where it goes. Kenny, I don't know if you've got anything else on it.
Be part of what we're living for already for mental health, wouldn't it?
That would too, yeah.
Kenny will get it clarified. So.
Yeah.
I mean, if not, I mean, it should be, it should be part of that.
Well.
Well, it's something we'll discuss tomorrow, tomorrow.
Yeah, and I think it's gonna be, obviously, none of us, nobody knew about it. It'll be out in Winnebago and uh, the students that are all.
Yeah, we got three votes coming tomorrow, so.
Yeah.
This'll be our second meeting. This'll be our second meeting within the new region, so.
Yeah.
Good.
Hopefully we can get that rectified.
Good.
We'll work on it, Dan.
Yep, and I'll, I'll also be on that meeting tomorrow and then I got a couple of things I'll bring up at department head discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds good. Thanks, Dan. Uh, Winworth Becko. Good morning.
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 The tour, the maps are, will be printed in a couple of weeks. I just have the proofs right now. And then I've submitted a proposal for a business in Minneapolis who would like to move just over the border. And um, there was one other, oh, Golden Shovel is moving along pretty well and we should have a website up in October. And then hopefully, um, if my son is feeling better, we're gonna go on vacation for a week starting on Wednesday. So I'll be out of the office.
Yeah.
And our new computers came, so um, there's been a lot of file transferring. And Eric at Winnebago County has been amazing on helping me. Thanks, Joel, too, for all your help.
Didn't do anything, so you're welcome.
Well, that's good. That's good.
Eric is amazing. You're right.
Dream about you, wasn't he?
Is having anything for Melissa though?
Melissa, the only is, I don't know if you've ever been asked or not, I'm on, you know, workforce development board. And one of the things we're doing, working with the new region, we're gonna have to get a lot of new uh local workforce development board members. And uh, you may be tasked with helping find some of those names at some point.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Got any, Ken? Okay, I think we're good to go. You got anything else for us?
I was gonna ask Jackie if um I still needed to post to that job for the recording clerk. Or no, not recording clerk or drainage person.
I'm working on it.
Okay, I'll send you Nima.
All right, thank you. All right, Jason Petersburg, update on our subdivision.
Well, they're backfilling fine grading. They were pretty close Friday. Looks like with rain this weekend, they got a little more cleaning up to do today. Hopefully they'll wrap it up um early this week. The cedars are there. They're planning to. Hopefully they'll wrap it up um early this week, the cedars are there, they're planning to seed the majority of that subdivision um this week with the exception of the right away area. Get some grass growing.
Might have an issue with getting the grass grow with all the Canadian geese landing out there. It was pretty full this morning, I mean, it'll get fuller as they keep flying south, I'm sure, because it's a pretty nice uh looking barren spot right now, so, and I know they like new growth. But I don't know what we could do other than, you know, imagine we'd have to be allowed to put a, you know, cannon out there or whatever, scare them off. I don't, it doesn't work at the golf courses, so, but it'll be what it'll be, I guess, but.
Yeah. Melissa, I did get your email and I'm working on filling in that information for you for marketing out there as well.
Thank you very much.
Electric, they do plan to go in here probably next week if everything gets seeded and cleaned up and equipment out of there. I'll be meeting with Heartland Power out there to get their plan put together.
Cool.
Very good.
Good.
Um I did meet with the DNR out there Friday. Did uh Patrick give me the few little things we need to take care of?
Yep, I'm waiting for Kayla's report too. She's asked for some additional information that we've provided to her, so.
Okay.
Items need corrected.
Yeah, a few minor little things, just, and it's all uh, you know. Till we get the CD, get the vegetation in, so if nothing major, didn't sound like, so.
No.
There's some straw, straw log gotta get replaced and clean out some of the filters in the storm intakes. They just kind of get silted in and we got, they got bags that are catching it all, but they just gotta clean them out and, yeah, a few minor things, so.
Always everything look good.
Any else, Jason?
That's for me.
You guys got anything for him? Sounds good, thank you.
Yeah.
Um department head discussion. Uh tenure capital plan.
Kid, talked to Joe and he basically said what, what we need first. Well, one of the things we need is to know how many wind towers to um figure out how much is actually gonna be coming so that we can get a projection from Jeff. But we got a little time for that, but another thing that we should do is to start basically a wish list. And um so all department heads, any capital in the next ten years that is a possibility. Um it, it needs to be put on the table and um then you guys can prioritize or whatever, however you want to go about it from there. But we need the list to be able to calm down, Joel.
Two feet bigger, so I have.
Yeah, yeah, no kidding. So, so basically, we just, we need that list to start working on things. Um Joe did um, I, I said we had that report from the Samuels group and he said that that was a good start for the building. Um but it wouldn't hurt to talk to him sometime after we start getting that stuff together and know how many wind towers and all that good stuff. And that's gonna come up real quick on him being gone.
Right.
So we were talking about November-ish possibly and then um hopefully by then we could um maybe be introduced to his replacement also. So we just hit both of them at one time.
We just wanted the new guy hard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
New person.
Yeah, person. Yeah.
Have they picked anybody yet?
Not yet, they're working on it, so.
I did have Jeff do a pre one a year ago when we first started talking about this, but then there's been more towers added since, so. So you're probably looking at quite a bit, significant increase from what he projected. And uh, you know, we, and he was pretty conservative when he did that, so.
And Joe needs parcel numbers before he can change the plan. So there's just different things that need to be, and they need to be fully functioning before they get.
Rich is supposed to be working on stuff for roads.
Alice, Selma? Boardroom. Yes, Beverly.
Yes, I was wondering about having a, a road. An elderly person walks on the county road, could we have a sign?
Have a sign?
Craft run that by the engineer, secondary roads, because they're the ones that are responsible for signage on whether that's possibility or not.
Okay, would you give me a number, please?
Just a minute. Six, four, one, three, two, four, three, six, six, two, Richard.
Three.
Pardon?
Three, six, six, two.
Yes, and uh our county engineer, um Mr. Byrne, Richard, Brown.
Richard.
Brown.
Thank you.
Okay, no problem, Beverly. Yeah.
Never seen a sign like that anywhere, I mean, it's possible, I mean, you have your share of the road signs.
For the bus, bus one.
The bus ones, but, but I mean, a share of the road sign might be just as effective, I mean, as a warning.
But it'd be John, um, not John, well, Jennifer, that's where it lives on, Jennifer.
Oh, okay.
Just east, just west of Matt's, that road there.
Oh, okay. Isn't that short proof?
It's a short road, yeah.
Probably a lot of, lot of signs out there.
Well, it'd be, it goes up and curves, yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's it, that's it.
Solis T.
Did you get that, Rich?
I'm just trying to figure out uh.
What do you use? There'd probably be a lot of them if that got started, which is fine, but.
Right.
Wouldn't a share of the road signs be about as effective as anything?
You know, I.
Not specifically bicycle, I mean, just share of the road, I mean.
Talking to highway or gravel road, or what are we on here?
The doc, actually, they live on uh Jennifer. Just off one oh five, it's just west of Matt's there.
Is there a lot of traffic? I.
There's some traffic on that road.
It's tough to start planting signs everywhere for somebody that wants to, I mean, there are people are walking. And I guess I don't know what the hazard is, but I don't know if there's, you know, we've got pedestrian crossings where you have pedestrian, a lot of pedestrian traffic, but if you've got one person. It's a little bit more difficult to put a sign up for one person and maintain it.
Right, so it's the same hazards anywhere else, it's just a lack, lack of respect from drivers is what it is.
Exactly, it's more of a.
Slow down, refuse to follow the law, that when you see somebody walking or biking or tractors or whatever, you're supposed to slow down to their speed before you pass them, but nobody does.
And you, you, you put the sign up, are people really gonna pick? The problem we get, we run into a lot of times is you start putting signs up for everything and people start ignoring signs. You know, we should be focused on putting the important signs up, the, the no pa, you know, we, if we start, like I said, if we start diluting the roadway right of ways with signs for everything. The important ones get forgotten, the stop sign, passing zone, you gotta be kind of cautious on where we want to start putting signs up for everything.
Okay, well, you handle it.
Right.
So basically, any, any bids that people can come up with, any, you know, for any things that are on their wish list that would be great or estimates or whatever, if that's possible.
Yeah.
Just. They end up, they just need to get prioritized.
Right.
After we figure out how much money we're actually talking about.
Yeah, so we just gotta get somewhat specific on it then.
The thing that'll change, you know, if, if we go through with the new building, that could change my wish list as opposed to if we don't go through it.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Right.
Because my world is changing even more consumption based instead of capital based, unless we have a new build up then.
So, way back to Samuel's group, did they tell you how much space we actually need for rooms?
Yeah.
They did, yeah.
Yeah, we have all that stuff done.
So that's in a report?
Yeah.
Okay.
But then, you know, filling those rooms and populating them.
Well, I understand, but I mean, that, in regard to some of the stuff over here that.
And did we really need a two, three story building, I mean.
Yeah.
What they put together for a building, I don't know if that's exactly what you guys would want or not, so. But we, they did do the study so that they were through each one of the rooms and they know how much space we all need and all that good stuff, so.
Plus whatever, so. So I think the space departments are there, it's just the.
So where, have you got the report?
Uh you guys should have it too, but if you don't, I can get another copy. It's been a while, yeah. I'm sure it won't be any trouble finding ways to spend money.
Oh, right.
No, we just gotta do it.
And I'm getting to probably pushing ten years on my election equipment. I probably need to get, and Mark's gonna be here tomorrow, so I'm gonna talk with him and see how much longer I can stretch those. So that would be something that would be on my wish list probably, just upgrade those. Um and then on the COVID nineteen CARES Act stuff, um. For, in the beginning, I had asked everybody to be keeping track of their expenses and I hope everybody was doing that, so um.
Even for small.
Yeah, because um we're gonna have to figure out a, or I'm gonna have to figure out how to get all that stuff reported and figure out how to get, there's up to ninety, it looked like ninety-three thousand dollars that the county can get. But there's a whole bunch of hoops that we're gonna have to jump through to.
Simple, short, hard for you to.
Oh, no, I don't think so. And I think you gotta go through NEMA first and there's all kinds of, so I gotta figure that out.
I'm gonna make it easy.
No, so. Need people to be working on those lists so that, you know, what we can actually use is. Any extra PPE, any extra construction or sneeze guards or whatever the heck you ended up getting because of it, I need a list of it and what it costs. And probably the bills to go with it. And probably by September first or, that's probably optimistic. Probably by the day after Labor Day would be nice.
Be appreciated.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Throw a spreadsheet out there for everybody to learn or just?
I'd just start with a list.
Yeah, they.
Most products and dollars, right?
Yeah. If, if you just had the bills and identify the stuff, I mean, we can.
Yeah.
We can look.
Anything, everything you do here is.
Some stuff was, was donated or given from some source, but. And like hazard pay, I don't know if there was money that was already given for that, for like public health and stuff like that, I have no idea about any of that stuff, so. I'll need to know about all that too.
Talk about it at a board meeting that I remember, but I know there's stuff that should qualify, I mean, like I said, they did get stuff donated too.
But they did.
Things they've done.
Hazard pay with transit buses and stuff like that.
They would have, yeah.
So.
Good.
That's my, I'll get off my soapbox.
No, that's fine.
Dan, you said you had some stuff you wanted to discuss at department head here?
Yeah, um first thing, I will be putting out an ad for a full-time female jailer dispatcher. I had one that is moving on from here, so you'll be seeing that come out here, hopefully some today and some later this week. Um one of my new trucks did come into Forest City Ford, um I probably won't go get that until after first week of September here. Um I talked to Comtech this morning, the second one should be shortly after that, it is September, Jackie, I'll remind you of that. Um.
Thank you very much.
Huh?
Thank you very much.
Yep. Uh the third thing I have is when you were talking about that, my biggest thing is on the building. I mean, with our jail inspections and what we've been pushing through on, which some of you have been involved with them and met the jail inspector is. That is the movement we've gotta go to and I don't know how much longer we're gonna be able to utilize that annex that we have for the deputies to be at just because of the deterioration inside that building. So um that would be mine, the only thing I would be pushing for is that.
Okay, good. Sounds good, thank you. Yeah, it's, all we can do, I guess, is put together a wish list and start figuring that out.
Could, ask Jeff a call too, I mean, they should know how many turbines there's gonna be, shouldn't they? Total, Jeff can run some projections at least.
Yeah, I don't know.
I thought we got seventeen more.
That's what I.
Do they notify the, the assessors office or how, how you know?
Oh, yeah, what's the steps there we gotta do too, I mean.
So instead of seventy, fifty-eight, we're gonna get seventy-five.
I think that's about right, yeah.
But I guess again, we could just contact Excel, whoever it is out there at Sean or.
Well, shouldn't they be given that information?
They should be, yeah. I'm assuming they should, because they should have it somewhat.
Maryland.
Not till after you get all the sites up.
Yeah, I don't know what the procedure is for them, but I would think they'd be able to start.
Right. And they've got uh.
In the past, they've always given me X Y spreadsheet with all the GPS locations on that. But that was from the other services that come in.
Right.
And do they have a surveyor that puts all that together, so they have?
All I, all I got was a spreadsheet with.
Suit they would, so that they can actually get a recorded plat for each location.
Because they're not taking land specifically, they're just taking.
They're leasing it, so there wouldn't be a specific plat. It's just leased.
Yeah, we're just putting numbers on.
And on the properties on, they just lease it.
Put number on a location, in a field, where cover would be, basically.
Pretty much.
I mean, that's what's done in the past.
I could call Bill Killen and find out, maybe how many.
Sure.
Huh?
Yeah, you got a number.
I mean, we don't need it right now, but.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Bill, we got, I'm at supervisor's room here this morning, how many wind turbines is Worth County gonna get Dickert out there and grow township?
What township?
Well, both townships now, I mean, we had, originally we had like supposedly fifty-eight and then supposedly there were seventeen more or something coming on, we want to know what the.
There's seventeen from Minnesota that got moved into on top of the number that you already have.
Which was fifty-six or fifty-eight.
So is that fifty-six or fifty-eight?
Um, tell you what, just give me a second, I'll talk to ones in Minnesota and minus it from a hundred and we'll have it.
There you go.
Okay.
They're just in Minnesota, aren't they? Pretty close.
There's twenty, there's twenty-four in Minnesota, so that'll give you seventy-six in Iowa.
Seventy-six in Iowa then.
Good.
Yep.
All right, well, thank you, Bill.
Not a problem, Ken, anytime.
Okay, I had a.
That's the offplay for me, I appreciate that too.
Pardon? Oh, yeah, no problem, okay.
All right, yep.
I just did some dial for him up there.
Oh. Okay.
So that says that, answers that then.
Seventy-six.
I'll pass that on to Jeff then.
Yeah.
Nice to know, huh?
Yeah. Yep.
And like I said, I mean, for me and I would imagine for a lot of us, you know, that the list is gonna change depending upon building or no building. Well, something we need to talk to Jeff a lot too is, it would be the original top aisle infarren, that thing's coming to about it.
Well, that's, that's.
We have to decide what we're gonna do with that, I believe.
I think that, Ryan talked to one of the workers out there.
Yeah.
There's one that's coming down.
It's already down.
It's already down.
And she's looking into it, but there's no, I don't think anyone requests yet to take it off.
Well, but supposedly that they're not gonna rebuild them out there. That's, that's what he said, the.
But there's, there's still a, so they just renewed leases with all the owners a year ago with an additional ten years.
Okay.
So that puts them at least thirty or be thirty-five, because the original life was twenty-five.
So, but if they fail, they're not gonna replace it.
Correct, well, yes.
That's what, that's what he said, but it, he said that they actually have, right in the center of the thing, they can set dynamite down there and then actually blow the concrete. It's already been pre.
They jackhammered this last one apart.
They did, anyways, and some of, they could actually set some, try to crack it, I guess, I don't know.
Yeah, but I mean, if that tiff is running out on that and we can either redo it or whatever, we'd be foolish not to.
Yeah.
I was talking to Joe about that too and it doesn't sound, just you won't have value.
Yeah.
Value would be the same.
But.
By the ordinance, they're still gonna, the value's not gonna change, is it?
But you've already used that.
Yes.
We, we, we can talk again.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Another one of those things that nobody understands.
Yeah, you can't use the same ballot, you can't use that same increment again.
But it should have a new value.
But will it be more than?
Right.
Unless they put new tunnels up or something.
So, but it means you don't wanna. So, but it means you don't wanna just roll that in the general budget and use it and blow it either. Because of 15 years from now, it's done and over, then, then we gotta come up with that money.
Yep.
Well, we need to talk.
Yeah, we need to get that figured out, because these things come to their sons.
Well, I know, it's, yeah, but it sounds like they're not gonna replace them.
Well, they were gonna replace the one, they, when the people got too greedy and they used one.
Oh, okay.
They like doubled the price after they had an agreement on it.
Well, I'm guessing when they get older, the value changes on them downwards, probably not upwards.
I don't know.
No, because, no, because we ran around it, first year I was on the board, they came in here and they wanted us to lower the value of that wind farm. And the deal was, and it was already all preset, but basically by the ordinance in state Iowa, it doesn't change.
That's right, yeah, because I had that same conversation with Cindy.
Yep. They don't change, till they tear them down.
Right. And that's, well, a little part of it too is probably why they'll get taxed 30%, that doesn't change.
They've already saved it all, so it really doesn't, I mean, you know, they could go on for another 30 years and it wouldn't pay, so it wouldn't pay if they were.
So basically, I think plus they're in there, they're in there, then it's, you know, yeah.
Yeah, Joe can explain.
Yeah, no, I mean, I wasn't, they're just, we need to be looking at that, because it's like, it'll be 20 years and I think that's what was tipped forward and it's, it's almost over.
Sure.
So.
Cool.
The first 20.
I'll be reviewing our debt before the end of the month, so I'll be looking at certain sets and stuff.
Okay.
Good.
Do you want me to add to that at all?
No.
No, no, we got it.
The answer for you, Joel, is no on everything.
Okay, thanks, I appreciate your corrections, your leadership is, is very much appreciated.
Let's go back to flirt phones.
Yeah. Oh. Uh, supervisor weekly report, Kenny?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Oh, and did any departments have, heads have anything else to add to it?
Recorder's, you have one on there? And Dan?
Sorry.
No, that's alright, I'm gonna finish one.
I'm assuming if treats it issue, I threw a chat out there, so.
Yeah, all good.
All good, yep.
The only thing I had was workforce development again and we're continuing to work on the next step, which is. We gotta start finding board members, not supervisor board members, but other board members. And that's why I mentioned to Melissa that she may be tasked with that at some point, uh, which is finding leaders in the community to serve on the local workforce development board. And we also, the big problem with that is, is it's mandated by law that there has to be a gender balance and there has to be a race balance. And that's, you know, gender is not a problem, you know, maybe, but it is a big enough area, hopefully race won't be an issue either. And, uh, so they, that's something we'll be working on here as we get all the other stuff into place, so, um, that was discussed last week.
Was that part of the bylaws in the first place or is there something new that they're trying?
No, it's, it's been that way for years and they've, even on our seven county, one we've had, we've had trouble getting people to commit. I mean, it's a commitment.
Because isn't it you and Melissa right now at this point?
Well, as far as the CEOs, but this would be, there's, yeah, that's a totally different board. That is the second part, the second part of the whole system and that's people like, um, can't think of, well, Kelly, Kelly used to sit on there from poet. He's not there anymore because he left, but, um, people like that, local business leaders that serve on the local workforce development board. And, uh, we still have to have those and so that's gonna be.
Have you tried just damn, we have to try to.
We could, I mean, that's somebody, yeah, as they'd be a name, we're not quite to that point of actually picking them yet, but we're just.
Asking for a volunteer or something?
And so we're, there's every, lots of steps that have gotta be followed there, we're trying to get done before the deadline, so.
Sure.
Guess you're the only one that I have listed right now.
Yeah, no, Melissa doesn't serve on that board, just that they, one of the persons says maybe we would utilize our local economic development directors. Because they should have access to a lot of the business people in the community and, you know, they would have names, hopefully that we could draw from. If they are people would be willing to serve, like I say, and the problem with people serving, say, from Worth County and say, we have the local board meetings. In Waterloo, or whatever, you know, wherever we might have a local meeting, which Zoom and all that takes care of a lot of that today. It really does make it a lot better, so we don't have that travel distance and time commitment. I mean, if you're 100 miles away, you know what, it's two hours over, two hours back and two hour meeting, six hours out of your day. And as a leader or a business person, that's really tough for them, if they can sit down on Zoom meeting and an hour, an hour and a half, two hours at most, you're done with your meeting and you can.
That Zoom thing's gonna stay.
It's gonna stay, I hope it does, I, I actually, I just say, I mean, for me with, uh, the juvenile detention boards, it's, it's always, no matter what. It's, it's a full six hour day, I mean, or full six hours out of your day where, I mean, I can actually sit in on the board meetings and you wanna say multitask. You gotta pay attention, but you can do other things and still pay attention about anything like that, so.
Yep.
I hope it does.
Exactly.
I don't see businesses going away from the remote model any time soon.
Yep. And then once people see cost savings on travel expenses and all that, they're gonna buy you a new laptop and.
I haven't had a travel expense since March.
Right.
That's been nice.
That's what it's, it's, we don't make any money doing that.
Right. Oh, yeah, alls I had last week was, uh, not with the DNR out there at development, just did a site survey. We just had a few, uh, straw logs that need to be addressed. And a few other little things just for still run off that kinda stuff, so until the vegetation gets in, otherwise they were, oh, paperwork was good. Um, they were gonna send off the report to Jason and I'm sure we'll probably get a copy, but everything seemed to be okay.
Moisture, they should be able to get the vegetation to grow, I mean, no, that's.
Yeah. Yeah.
Working out good actually, so.
Yep, so, and I was, kinda as we were walking around, I mean, everything paving all looked really good, it was looking, it was. Pretty much walked the whole facility, so looks real nice. Um, that's all I had last week, so. Oh, one more thing I did get hit up about, uh, like last week was, um, I guess, uh, Worth County EMS. Um, EMS board, um, will probably be, according to states, are supposed to have a supervisor on. Oh, that board, and I don't have one, so I told them I would be interested.
You would?
Yeah, yeah, so.
That'd be, I would say that's no conflict with you being on the, it shouldn't be no issue.
It shouldn't be.
I have no problem with it, but it.
It's, uh, yeah, I mean.
Because you know, you know something about it.
Right, right, so, and I, uh, figured I'd take that one on for now and. But when they saw Bob Rush maybe getting hold of us here within the next few meetings or some point in the near future to come in and just ask for that.
Officially, that'll be, that'll be a board going forward.
Yes, it's more a state, state thing that they, they do want the super, one of the supervisors involved on that stuff, so, cool.
Good.
Uh, anything else needs to go on the agenda for future?
We took care of Brian Waller's case or whatever.
Yeah, kind of, yeah, I guess what it is, see what happens.
For now.
Yep.
Um, other than that, just to take the motion to adjourn?
So long.
One second.
All in favor, I?
Aye.
Aye, we need to adjourn, thanks everybody.